hereby call, it's now six o'clock, hereby call the Monday, November 18th, 2024, Board of Supervisors Business Meeting through order. If everyone would kindly please stand, and I would ask Ms. Gabriella Walker from Homestead Minutes Streets to lead us in an invocation.
Father, I thank you so much for this day. I thank you, God, for these people who are willing to serve our community. Father, this may not be Congress, and this may not be the Senate. We may not have the President of the United States, God, but we've got people here who are serving our community. And Father, I pray that you would give them wisdom. I pray, Father, that whatever decisions that they have to make, Lord, that you would be the one guiding them. I pray, Father, for your mercy, for your grace, to be honest, as a community, Father. I pray, Lord, that we might see unity. I pray, Father, that in the very interesting times we are living in right now, that we might see your glory shining. So, Father, right now, I ask that your hand would be on this place and on every person here, every person who's going to speak from the community, all the people who are on the Board of Supervisors, Lord, I just ask for the blessing of this place and on this time. May your name be praised and exalted here. For Jesus is the great name.
Mr. Kendrick, would you kindly lead us in the pledge and allegiance?
Pledge and allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now a moment of silence in recognition of our U.S. military serving here and abroad in all of our public safety. All right, welcome to the Patrick County Board of Supervisors meeting where our local government body convenes monthly or bimonthly to address community matters that are under the purview of the board. We uphold civility as a cornerstone of our proceedings and expect all attendees to conduct themselves accordingly. There is always opportunity for public engagement, including scheduled public comment and additional public hearings on specific agenda items. We encourage active participation from our residents. In addition to these meetings, your Board of Supervisor representative is readily available for communication by email and/or phone outside of the formal session. Please be advised that outbursts or disruptive behavior will not be tolerated. We aim to maintain a respectful and productive environment for all the attendees. Thank you for your cooperation and involvement in shaping our future of our community. Now, we move into our regular session with the approval of meeting and agenda. Do we have any amendments?
Mr. Chairman, may I make two changes to the agenda, please?
Yes.
Under new business, I'd like to add roof repairs for the community college. And under old business, to remove the proposed dangerous dog vaccination fees ordinance.
Just so that the public is aware, it's my understanding that the court would need to do that and the county could not. Okay. Would we still need, since it was proposed, do we still need to take a vote on that? Or can it just be, it's not within the realm of the board to do the ordinance and be done with that?
I wasn't here last meeting. Did you all vote on it then, or?
We did not. We tabled it for this month.
Okay. Was there a motion raised?
I think the motion was to table it for this month. So where it's been proposed.
Okay. Then I don't think there's any further action.
Okay. Then, uh, no further action. All right, thank you. And I would like to add, under new business, I think all of the board members received the email, and I think he's here tonight to speak on it as well. Uh, it's a request for the county to request the FCC to see if they would include Virginia News in our local, uh, TV media area, so that not only do we get Greensboro news and weather on, uh, the satellite TV packages, but it also allows to get Virginia as well. So I would like to add a quick discussion about that.
I didn't get it.
Okay. All right. Well, and that's just discussion tonight. I'm not asking for any kind of, uh, vote or anything, just the discussion. Does anyone have anything else? And with that, I'll take a motion to approve the agenda.
The amended agenda.
The amended agenda, thank you.
So moved.
All right. And do I have a second? I'll second. So I've got a motion and a second call for a vote. Mr. Marshall?
Aye.
Mr. Kendrick?
Aye.
Mr. Wood?
Aye.
Ms. Holt?
Aye.
And I'll vote aye as well. Next, we have the approval of the meeting minutes from October 21st, 2024.
How about the motion on that? It doesn't say it was tabled.
What's that?
I can't hear. The minutes don't say the motion on the 21st was tabled.
Okay. And I think that's where our attorney was going, where we had to take a vote on this.
Is it okay? Like, if I just?
It's.
So what the board did was, um, table the discussion, but had the attorneys directed to draw up an ordinance. Um, Mr. Fitzgerald and I had spoke regarding the ordinance, and he made it clear that the capabilities that the animal shelter was looking for was already included in the statute.
I just wanted to make sure the minutes were clear and it was a tabled. Okay. All right. And if you say so, then we'll go along with that.
So if the, as long as the minutes are clear with that, do I have a, uh, a motion to approve the?
I'll make the motion.
So I've got a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
And call for a vote. Mr. Marshall?
Aye.
Mr. Kendrick?
Aye.
Mr. Wood?
Aye.
Ms. Holt?
Aye.
And I'll vote aye as well. Um, next, um, approval of bills, claims, and appropriations.
I do have one correction. Um, on page three, under transfer station, there's a from vehicle and equipment maintenance for 447.99 with no two, and it's going to go toward other operating expenditures. And then on page four, there was some additional interest in the ARPA fund that was earned from the end of the month through today in the amount of $3,029.14. And I'm going to add that to the expenditure to go toward the courthouse improvements. So instead of 1,342,967.21, the transfer will be 1,345,996.35.
Do we have any questions about that? If not, do I have a motion to approve bills, claims, and appropriations?
So moved.
Do I have a, a motion? Do I have a second? I have a second. So call for a vote. Mr. Marshall?
Aye.
Mr. Kendrick?
Aye.
Mr. Wood?
Aye.
Ms. Holt?
Aye.
And I'll vote aye as well. All right. The, uh, next, we have a resolution. So it's a resolution for the delay in solar application consideration. So whereas on September 26th, 2022, the Patrick County Board of Supervisors adopted the Patrick County, Virginia Solar Ordinance in an effort to set forth the terms and conditions of which the solar facilities may be cited in Patrick County. And whereas on June 12th, 2023, the Board of Supervisors, in order to promote the use of residential, commercial, and utility-scale renewable energy by providing for the location of solar generator facilities while minimizing the impact of such facilities on the county's viewshed and the county's natural agricultural, scenic, tourism, and cultural resources, did amend our Chapter 11 land use of the Patrick County Comprehensive Plan by adding a section entitled solar facilities. And whereas on June 12th, 2023, the Board of Supervisors, in order to set forth the policies and procedures by which large-scale solar energy facilities will be evaluated as being in substantial compliance with Patrick County Comprehensive Plan in accordance with Section 15.2-2232, Section H of the Code of Virginia, did amend and reenact the solar ordinance. And whereas Section 15.2-2232 of the Code of Virginia and the amended solar ordinance require large-scale solar energy facilities to complete a permit application to be evaluated for compliance with the solar ordinance and for accordance with the Comprehensive Plan. And whereas the Board of Supervisors has directed the Planning Commission to review the current solar ordinance and the solar facilities section of the Comprehensive Plan and develop possible amendments to address the development of energy facilities in the county. And whereas the Board of Supervisors believe to promote health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of the county, it is important that all applications for a permit for the development of large-scale solar facilities be consistent with the solar ordinance and the Comprehensive Plan that is being developed. And whereas the Board of Supervisors requests that no applications for solar energy facilities be submitted until the county's review of its solar ordinance and Comprehensive Plan on solar facilities is completed and any amendments thereto are approved. So I'll hereby take a motion that the Patrick County Board of Supervisors does hereby state its intention not to consider any applicants for a permit for the development. I'm sorry, my computer just went crazy on me. For the development of a large-scale solar energy facility until the county's amendment of a comprehensive energy facility ordinance and Comprehensive Plan has completed. Do I have that motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
And I have a second. So I'll call for a vote. Mr. Marshall?
Aye.
Mr. Kendrick?
Aye.
Mr. Wood?
Aye.
Ms. Holt?
Aye.
And I'll vote aye as well. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Supervisor, Patrick County, Virginia, does hereby instate its intention to not consider the applicant for a permit for the development of large-scale solar energy facilities until the county's amendment of the Comprehensive Energy Facility Ordinance and Comprehensive Plan. Applications received prior to the date of this resolutions will be considered as previously scheduled, which, to my knowledge, there is none at this time. Uh, it is passed and adopted by the Board of Supervisors of Patrick County this 18th day of November. Next, public comment. So our public comment offers citizens the opportunity to address the board either in person or in writing on matters relevant and responsibilities to the board to maintain a respectful and constructive environment. Please adhere to the following guidelines. Addressing the board: Please direct all comments to the board as a whole, refraining from addressing individual board members or employees of the board or the county. Respectful conduct, personal attacks, as well as the use of insulting, profane, or vulgar language will not be tolerated. Scope of topics: Comments should pertain to issues within the purview of the board and local government. Topics beyond the board's control or unrelated to local governance are not appropriate for public comment. Question and answer: Public comment is not a question-and-answer session. Board members will not respond to questions during public comment without permissions from the chair. The enforcement: The chair may rule a speaker out of order for violating these rules. Upon a second violation, the speaker may be removed from the podium. Eligibility: Only residents of Patrick County or property owners in Patrick County are eligible to address the board during the public comment period. A time limit for each speaker will be allocated for three minutes for their comments. However, if multiple citizens wish to address the board on the same issue, they may appoint a spokesperson to see, to speak for up to five minutes, provided they forfeit their individual speaking slots. Chair authority: The chair has the authority to manage the time and allocate for public comment, including limiting the number of speakers, shortening speaking time, or waiving any public comment provisions as deemed necessary. Sign-up procedure: A sign-up sheet is available on the podium for the citizens to register to speak. Speakers will be called in the order of sign-up, and additional speakers may be accommodated if time permits. Submission of comments: Speakers may provide copies of their comments to the clerk for inclusion in the meeting minutes. Thank you for your cooperation in maintaining a respectful and productive public comment session. That's a mouthful. I know you all get tired of listening to me. I get tired of saying it. First up, we have Mr. Steve Ferring from the Dan River District in reference to managing, management. Mr. Ferring.
Hello. But there seems to be a movement on the board to apply mismanagement of the Social Services Department to the entirety of county functions and resources. This is dangerous and irresponsible when it's obvious that you know less than the professionals that administer the day-to-day county functions. Your irresponsible management of the Social Services Department for the last three years not only put foster children in mortal jeopardy, but our county finances in peril as well. I would ask that Mr. Kendrick tell us what financial liability the bills that remained unpaid from last year total from his chairmanship of the subcommittee that had financial oversight of the Social Services Department. We expect that he will vote funds to cover the expenses of the department since they've had to use current funding to pay them. Odd that these required funds of up to $66,300 for the fiscal year are not in the current budget. One can only assume that he knew this problem existed since he was the cause of its existence in the first place and the chair of the committee that drafted the current county budget. Therefore, I firmly believe that based on your prior attempts at micromanaging the county departments, and that includes our EMS, you have clearly demonstrated that you do not have the background or the expertise to do so, and your interference constitutes criminal county mismanagement. We pay the county administrator and the department heads to manage county resources. And expect their experience and education to efficiently use the funds allocated to better the county. Now is the time to begin the next fiscal year's budget process. This year, the taxpayers would like to have all operating budget meetings made public with public input allowed. The current budget fiasco was put together with no meetings, no common sense, and no honesty from certain members of the board. All meetings should be posted on a timely basis as to time and place and the public invited to attend. The public has the right to be a constructive party to the creation of next year's fiscal budget. Thankfully, expense numbers are available in the county as a starting point, but need to be verified as to department missions and needs. Since the board has ignored requests to establish a centralized purchasing department, the Budget Committee itself will have to justify all requests for funding and verify that the requests are for legitimate services provided. Reserves need to be established to cover replacement of capital, equipment, and maintenance under the circumstances. Money set aside for the non-disclosure of expenses that the previous board conveniently forgot to mention.
Thank you, Mr. Ferring. If you could wrap it up, please.
If you deny public access to these discussions, we should have the right to determine the amount that we wish to give to the county for the legitimate services provided. I would propose that each taxpayer write two checks for their property taxes.
Getting into the weeds there, were you?
Say 10% for the graft some of you people seem to want to hide, and one for the remaining funds needed to, for legitimate purposes. Now, we ought to be clear to all of us, the amount you either take for yourselves or in kickbacks or parcel out to your friends and relatives.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Corey Johnson from Smith River District.
And the Virginia Department of Forestry. Right. I only need 30 seconds of your time. I'm Corey Johnson. I work for the Virginia Department of Forestry, and this was the easiest way for me to get everyone of y'all in the room and say, hey, this is me. Make sure y'all know I'm here as a county resource to help y'all in whatever shape and form that I can do, uh, natural disasters and whatnot. Me and Scotty, we worked together already, but I wanted y'all to see me and I see y'all. So thank you for your time. If you have any questions, I've got business cards. Y'all can reach out to me after the meeting.
Thank you very much, and welcome. Next, we have Karen. I'm sorry, I can't make out your last name from Smith River District. I'm sorry. Thank you.
What's your last name again? Karen DeCap, Smith River. Looking at the role of facilities director, a newly high-paid position in the county with responsibilities involving managing budgets, cost effectiveness, and optimizing expenses, these are objectives falling in line with the county administrator, a position citizens of an already strained county are paying a six-and-a-half figure to perform. When the most major issue to face this county for months is a solar facility, buying hundreds of mountain land for which the company withdraws, and the response of the C.A. is, I didn't ask why, this exposes utter incompetence or lack of transparency. It could be one, or sadly both. As a pattern emerges to hire high-paid administrative positions and equipping them with county vehicles, and since the C.A. works and assists with the goals of the board, I would ask, is this the change in growth you're striving for? With the new hires being from outside the county and seemingly from the same county, a county which has three times the population and half of the poverty rate, this is an insult to not only the struggling PC taxpayers, but the dedicated, hard-working PC county employees. If these hiring judgments continue, to pay for this expenditure, the personal property tax will increase as well as property taxes. The unfairness and the cruel irony will be placed upon the taxpayers to foot the bill while these hires are unaffected by price increases, having their vehicles paid for and not residing in the county. Now with the conduct of BOC being revealed, I want to thank the Enterprise and reporters Debbie and Taylor for their honorable commitment to provide truth to the citizens of PC. To the BOs, you know who you are. This continual embracing of deceitful DC tactics, to go behind the backs and against the will of your own voters, to the detriment of the county taxpayers, short of resignation, I would urge the board to release the current C.A. and make an amendment to have the C.A. become an elected position. Since the county clerk is an elected position and the C.A. position is unbelievably in the pay bracket of the sheriff, this is a reasonable and justified request. With accountability, this will encourage decisions and motivation be firmly to the benefit of the citizens. Anyone holding the C.A. position will have their conduct be reviewed and ultimately be decided by the very people paying their salary, the Patrick County taxpayer. To certain BOs, respect has been lost. Act to revive it and ponder whether you deserve the opportunity. Thank you for this time, and God bless Patrick County.
Thank you. Next, we have Mike DeCap from Smith River District for the Board of Supervisors.
Mike DeCap, Smith River District. Twelve words, 12 little words out of a page and a half newspaper article recently. Came off the page and hit me like a punch in the face. And those words, "If people raise a fuss, we'll change our mind." That does not speak well to the board's receptiveness to listen to ideas from the citizens. And that's really unfortunate. There are a lot of intelligent, thoughtful people in this county that are every bit as passionate about it as you are. And their positions, even if in opposition to yours, at least deserve fair consideration. We've seen these things down the road. We experienced them to some extent with the solar facility, where it seemed like, no matter how reasoned, no matter how data-driven, any concerns, any objections, seemed to fall on deaf ears. I was told once by a longtime resident of this county, by the time the public hears about it, it's already a done deal. And I'm starting to think that statement carries some merit. I hope that certain members of the board, for the duration of their term, can find it within themselves to at least give the citizens' opinions the consideration that they so richly deserve. I'm not sure that these words are going to have any meaning with any of you, but I appreciate the opportunity to be able to address you. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. DeCap. And I would like to say that more of that happens than you, than it appears. And I know rumor control and that article in the paper was basically tabloidish, and it was not an accurate. It was not an accurate of what was, uh...
Question and answer by...
Train and let the man speak. You don't talk over people.
Timeout. Stop, 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 please. Please, right? So I'm just saying that we do listen, and we do hear, and we do weigh all the ins and outs. And a lot of that isn't, it doesn't come across. So, thank you. Next, we have, uh, Mr. Richard Landis, Peters Creek, about the FCC.
Good evening, board members. My name is Richard Landis. I live in Stewart, and I would like to ask you to petition the FCC for a market modification to our satellite network. What this means is, right now, we currently, for most of us that have satellite, whether it's dish or direct, we only get news from North Carolina. We live in Virginia. I don't need North Carolina news. I'd really rather hear what's happening in Virginia. This has been going on since the 1960s when the FCC set up the districting. The reason why this happened is because we couldn't get Virginia news because of the mountains, and they blocked our, you know, reception through antennas. Now with satellite, we no longer need that, you know, issue. So we should be able to get our own state's news. It's actually really important that we do this because, first of all, we don't even know local weather, but in real, in the reality, we don't even know if there's a danger in our area. We don't get tornado warnings for Virginia. We don't get the hurricane warnings. We saw all about what happened in North Carolina during the hurricane, but I saw nothing what happened in Virginia. And the other thing we don't get is any of the political news for Virginia. We only get North Carolina. In reality, what this means is that if this would pass the FCC, all we'd have to do is change the way we're pointing our direct or dish TV dishes. That's it. There's no other thing that has to be done except change the direction that the antennas are pointed. I would ask you to look into this. I sent all of you by email, um, the forms from the FCC. It's an online process. I've already spoken to Dish and Direct TV. I've actually spoken to Morgan Griffith about this, um, and several other congressmen. And I would ask you to look at this and give it serious consideration, and if I can be of any help, I would ask you to reach out to me. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Next, we have Vince A.G., Blue Ridge District, about government efficiency.
Good evening. Thank you for your time. I reside in the Blue Ridge District, Metazide, Dan, Virginia. Our county officials, Board of Supervisors, and any appointments were duly elected or appointed to conduct the financial affairs of this county. This county is a business, and I'm going to share with you my personal experience how to go out of business, because I am it. During COVID, we shut the economy down. In hindsight, bad decision. We tried to keep people employed. We did get PP monies that was qualified and distributed to keep our employees. Our revenues dropped significantly because people were... Our revenues dropped significantly because people were homebound and not going out and spending money at our convenience store. When they came back and made sure that we were essential business and able to navigate accordingly, our gross revenues dropped, our gross profits dropped, but all of our expenses went up. For example, the statewide mandate for minimum wages have increased 65%. Where did it come from? Gross profits. There's a little leftover. Tax rates go up. 1% for the county tobacco tax, passed on to the consumer. Still got to collect it, still got to pay it. And then we also have the meals tax being revised and updated to increase revenues for the county, passed on to the consumer. Cost of goods sold for the entire business has increased due to inflation or whatever other excuses may be made for it, 31%. Okay, that's how we're going to manage this. We'll just raise everything, 31%, 65%. That's a real discouragement for customers to come to our location, because we've now priced ourselves out of a job. They're going to go somewhere else, because we're not competitive. Therefore, the gross profits are reduced to the point that we operate in the red. As a result, I took my salary cut first, because I'm not entitled to it if it doesn't exist. So therefore, 50% reduction in my salary to run this business and try to keep it afloat and keep everybody employed, I took the hickey. So when it's in the red, you close up shop. So we think it's necessary and reasonable you are duly elected to manage these affairs. We need to do it internally and respectfully. Look for any waste, inefficiencies, and I didn't see anybody in here, in the administration, take a hickey on it. Fixed income, you manage with what you got. I think our budget needs to be managed accordingly. And any inefficiencies that are derived, the statewide increase in wages for the state of Virginia, they weren't richly considered. The cost of living here is not the same as Washington, D.C., Richmond, or Tidewater. We get that. That needs to be factored into it when we want to consider going out and reassessing our taxes early so that we can fill the budget. Let's cut the budget. How about give us one line item where we can find some inefficiencies? Give us some indication that you truly are looking after our financial best interest in this county. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Mr. Kurt Bosomire, Smith River District, about communication.
Good evening. My name is Kurt Bosomire. I'm from the Smith River District, and I would like to address the Board regarding the state of communication between the county administration and the public. I have addressed the Board of Supervisors on this issue several times over the past few years, and I am disappointed to find that the state of communication has grown worse over that time rather than improved. The recent issue of the Enterprise containing extensive quotations from supervisor emails and an article on restriction of communication between supervisors and county employees seems to highlight the deterioration. Recent hot-button issues such as the hospital issue, solar facility applications, and EMS budget crises only emphasize how much our citizenry is being disenfranchised by rumor and innuendo rather than obtaining honest and reliable information from the county administration. For many months now, I have advocated that the county take a lesson from our Tourism Director and our Chamber of Commerce Director and place a short weekly column on Page Two of the Enterprise, giving accurate factual information on issues facing the county. For example, one week could describe planned changes to the transfer station, the next week could feature the situation at the animal shelter, third week could be budget highlights, et cetera. We are facing a serious deficit in volunteerism in the county right now, in staffing for the fire companies and rescue squads, as well as difficulties in adequately staffing our various boards and commissions. A depressingly high percentage of our population is unaware of what many of these organizations even do in the course of their operations. At this time, I feel that we need more open communication between the administration and the public, and for that matter, more open communication within the county administration itself rather than a lot of behind-the-scenes emails and restriction on county employees speaking to supervisors and/or the press. Please consider this an urgent issue for action soon. Thank you.
Next, we have Ms. Trina Anderson from Peters Creek.
Thank you. I'm grateful that Debbie Hall, the Enterprise...
If you kindly swing your microphone.
I'm sorry. Taylor Boyd chose to expose some of the activities of this Board for all to see. Thank you very much. No public body is required to charge for FOIA information. I ask that this Board reimburse the outrageous fee of $1,178 that the county administration charged for your attorney at Fitzgerald. Fitzgerald should know that an attorney is an intermediary. Thus, his time should be charged to the Board and not to the Enterprise. And in that packet I gave you, there's a FOIA advisory opinion from 524 that explains this. This current Board adopted rules of procedure in January of this year. Those procedures don't specifically cover public comment, and you need to review them and clarify that. Section 5-4 of your rules of procedure prohibit a conduct. Persons appearing before the Board will not be allowed to, number two. Use language which insults or demeans any person, which, when directed at a public official or employee, is not related to his official duties. However, citizens have the right to comment on performance, conduct, and qualifications of public figures. Well, gee, that blows Mr. Perry's unconstitutional rules for public comment right out of the water. Section 8.2 of your procedures, amending rules of procedure. Adoption of amendments shall require an affirmative vote of the majority of the Board. There was no discussion on these rules, nor was there a vote. Once again, this current Board failed to follow your own rules and procedures when you sought to silence the public comment in June. Mr. Perry and Ms. Sims have violated those new rules immediately during that first meeting in June, right after reading them to the public. It's obvious, when reading Mr. Perry's texts and emails to other supervisors, that he lacks tact, management skills, and following rules and orders. The manner in which Mr. Perry speaks down to women during meetings in this room and in his written communications is disgusting and degrading. Mr. Perry and Mr. Marshall have stood, sat here in this room and called citizens liars and stupid during meetings. The behavior of some on this Board shows blatant disrespect for taxpayers and other supervisors, as well as the disrespect for laws, procedure, and especially transparency. You work for us. You should immediately resign your positions on this Board and save the taxpayers the expense and time of removing you. Many of us have no trust, respect, nor confidence in this Board. Thank you.
Next, we have Valerie Loi, I'm sorry, Valerie Loi, from the Blue Ridge District.
Okay. I'm here to address, I'm from the Blue Ridge District. Okay. Doug Perry, the chairman, reads public comments within his roles to citizens. He states that addressing the Board as a whole and not individually, this is stereotyping everybody on the Board. Reasoning, the chairman, Doug Perry, was upset with several citizens that were requesting, questioning him about the debt that the county is 29.7 million in debt, which he continues to deny. It's still on the website. You can look it up. He respects, he requests respectfully comments to list no personal attacks, no insulting remarks, and individuals can be removed from the chair. Is this power of thee or is this power of me? Some of us citizens come to the Board with concerns over the inmates at the transfer station, only to be ignored, and we were told with pictures and videos by Mr. Marshall that this stuff was not true, and it was. When we come to you about something and then we're shot down. But, Mr. Perry, you called people liars and you called me a liar. Yes, you did. You can listen back. And I totally present that. And that's very uncomfortable. And the question is, EMS and the EMTs, what would this county have done if they walked off the job? What if they all just walked off the job because they had their salaries cut? Where would our county be in that position? Something for us to think about. And I really hope you guys start listening to the people that got you in your positions, because you're going to be up again sometime. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Debbie Foley from the Smith River District, from Smith River Rescue.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Debbie Foley, and I'm with the Smith River Rescue Squad. And these are my opinions. They don't represent the squad, even though I am the captain. My main concern and angst, if you will, is how the apparent restructuring of Station Eight was handled. It was, it really showed a lack of understanding of how Station Eight, the fire department, and rescue squads are all connected. Transparency and communication. In early March, the county administrator called a special meeting of the ESAC meeting to regarding a fire and rescue study that the state gives for any EMS department that requests it for any locality or municipality at no charge. She wanted to have the study done for Patrick County Fire and EMS. We had an online meeting with a gentleman that explained the process. The study was actually conducted in late August with interviews with all the rescue squads, including Station Eight and all the fire departments. I believe the draft of this study will be coming to the Board in January. This was embraced by everyone. Personally, I was very happy to see some proactive movement from the county administration and the absolute transparency of it. No drama here. So you can imagine the consternation and confusion that it created when it became apparent that the whole structure of Station Eight was being redone. From the information available, it appears that none of the Board of Supervisors were aware as well, from the information available. That's the issue, isn't it? What happens with Station Eight and the director of EMS directly affects every rescue squad and fire department, and I should not have to explain that statement. If you don't understand it, I encourage you to reach out to the stations and squads in your district. In the absence of transparency and communication, rumors fly and tongues wag, and I'm fully aware that personnel matters cannot be discussed. However, many Station Eight employees are volunteers, as I am. So everything that's occurred is out there. Fire and EMS is a very small community, and everybody seems to know or know of everyone. In my opinion, this whole debacle was completely preventable due to the lack of transparency and communication. The level of anxiety, or take your pick of any similar adjective, that this has created for everyone, including the county administration and the Board of Supervisors, is, again, in my opinion, inexcusable. I'll finish with this. We must not lose sight of the forest for the trees. Emotions and passions run high on both sides, opinions vary, and methods may be questioned. But the common goal cannot get lost in this process. That goal is our love and concern for Patrick County and its future. I encourage all to remember that those emotions and passions stem from that common place. Transparency and communication are an integral part of the process and must be embraced to prevent this drama and misunderstanding. I in no way condone personal attacks on any side, but in the absence of a voice and the perception of being heard, this is the line of transparency and communication. I appreciate all that the county administration is trying to do and all that you, as the Board, are trying to do. I've been intimately involved in this process, and I understand the challenges that trying to walk this line can do. But you cannot operate in a vacuum. As they say, "An ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure." And I really think that we could all benefit from some level of grace, both given and received. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Foley. Next, we have John, is it Weiser? Hi, sir.
West.
West.
My name is John West. I'm a firefighter EMT for the town of Stewart, also Moorfield Store. I'm the current administrative president at Stewart Fire, though I'm not necessarily representing myself and their goals being the same thing. One of the things I'd like to address is, according to the Enterprise article on 11/13/2024 obtained by the Freedom of Information Act, Ms. Sims, one of her statements was, and it's in partial context to that, "All of her other employees would be better off to quit their jobs and apply to work in EMS department." That's not quite accurate, I would think, because you have to be certain certifications to do that. And we certainly would encourage any of those employees to take that 162-plus-hour course. I know we've tried to have them here in the county. We need to have a certain number of people to be able to do that. And also, part of her other statement said was compression, whatever that referred to, but equity issues have been created. There's not an equity issue unless you're talking about other EMTs and paramedics, because unless you're talking about an across-the-board type of pay raise, it's just not the same type of thing. It's no different than talking about someone who's operating the waste treatment plant versus someone who's on Trash Crew. And I'm not going to put Trash Crew down, because I did that when I was younger. So I can appreciate the work that they do. One of the other things we're taking a look at is the hours being talked about. There are many statistics out there that show that 24-48-hour shifts have a much higher incidence of injuries versus 24-72 types of things. I've been in administration in hospitals. I have a master's degree in health administration, so I've been researching some of these articles. And the numbers just go up astronomically in terms of where you're taking a look at, in terms of their alertness, their impaired ability to react. This goes across the board for firefighters. And myself getting up at 4:00 in the morning, I just do not react like I do at 10:00 at night. Any of those who have ever worked split shift types of things or longer hours can certainly appreciate that. One of the things is, I moved here eight years ago to retire to this area. I had the fortune to be able to get back into firefighting and EMT that I'd done before. Coming from New England, I would say one of the things we have there that's kind of gone by the wayside is town meeting, where the town members are involved in being able to distribute funds and what goes on. Not necessarily the most functional type of thing, but if the Board could take a look at getting committees from their districts to have different inputs from different workers, people who've owned businesses, people who are in healthcare, EMTs, fire departments, just to be able to give a better viewpoint to what everybody's taking a look at. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. West. Next, we have Mr. Galen Gilbert from Peters Creek. Mr. Gilbert.
Good evening. I'm just a little slow and getting older, getting ready to get my senior citizen next month. So anyway, after reading the paper, I did get inquisitive, and as you said, it was tabloid information. Here's all the texts that y'all have been corresponding. I got every one of them, and I'm disgusted. I am very disgusted. This ain't tabloid, this is fact. Y'all gonna have to quit this spending, like I said, last meeting... Y'all gonna have to quit this spending, like I said last meeting, quit backstabbing of other members, and get a backbone to yourself and stand up. Our county administrator, I don't know who works for who. I don't know if she works for y'all or if y'all work for her, but I'm not happy with her either. And yes, in the hall, I have said she needs to be fired.
No, you were cussing her.
I don't give a hoot. I don't need a comment from you. This is my time.
Your time's run. Go, please.
And I see that y'all want to discuss this emergency job, I guess you call them the fire chief. He resigned, from my understanding. Yes, y'all can discuss about putting the stipulation of living here in the county, but at this point in time, he resigned, and I wouldn't trust him as far as I could see him. When you quit, you quit. You don't bring him back. And I know this is being televised on the internet, and I hope the ones that need to be seeing it are seeing it, because we, the citizens of Patrick County, are not happy. Thank y'all.
Next we have Mr. Ed Poole.
Mr. Perry, I think the things I want to talk about have been pretty well covered.
Thank you, Mr. Poole. And next we have Mr. Walter Scott from Smith River.
First, I would like to ask to speak as a taxpayer, as a citizen of the county, and not a school board member.
Yes, sir.
Okay. And I'm looking for information as much as anything. Rural Services, to me, they are a five-star company. In my district, they emptied my dumpsters on Monday. Every Monday morning, they come and empty my dumpsters. When the county has a holiday, they are not allowed to empty my dumpsters on Mondays. So they come on Friday. So they come Monday and Friday. Then they miss two weekends in a row. Can y'all tell me why that is? I know you can't answer that, but I would love to know why the Rural Services and the people of the county are being jerked around on getting our trash picked up. I would love to know that answer.
It's a private company.
It's a private company, that's correct.
After your time, I'll, quick answer.
Okay. The next one I would like to ask about, and I asked Beth Sims this question before some time ago, and I did not get a good answer. It was somewhat in the paper the other day. I still do not understand why the old school board office is vacant. That makes no sense to me. I'm getting ready to pay my taxes here in a few days, save my money up all year for that, and it's all thrown away in this building over here by not using it. So I would just love the good answer on that. Last, thank you for what y'all do for the county. That's it.
So just real quick in a nutshell, the transfer station where they're closed on holidays, so that for Rural Services can't get in there to dump, and is something being worked on. I know there was some talk about trying to figure something out to have that on holidays where they can dump. And then to the building, it's coming. We've done a lot of studies and figured out the best use for that, and that's coming. So thank you.
Can I say one other thing? It's my understanding of Rural Services, they did pick our trash up on a holiday, and they would dump it the following day.
And that would be up to Rural Services.
They said it was, they was not allowed to do that.
Okay. I can't answer that.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, and so let me clarify my statement about the tabloid piece. The difference between news and tabloid. When an article is written and it leads the reader to a conclusion that the editor is going for, that's tabloid, and that's what this article did. And Mr. Gilbert, yes, I'm not denying text, emails, and I'll stand behind everything I sent. And I feel they were very professional, but that's tomato-tomato. So if, tomato-tomato, opinion? So if that article had come back and said, hey, Mr. Perry, in this email, you said blah, 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 what was that in context? What did you mean? What's the specifics? None of that was done. It was an opinionated article that was very one-sided and very misleading. You gave your opinion, that's mine, time to move on. Thank you. All right, moving on to new business. Mr. or Dr. Greg Hodges, President, Patrick and Henry Community College.
Hey, Doug. Can I make a comment?
Yes, sir.
The way we used to do exact public comment is we waited till everybody spoke, and then we took turns replying to them.
Okay. All right.
And the weekend skip at this time, I mean, that's the way we used to do it. I didn't get a chance to rebuke what Mr. Ferren said, so I'll skip at this time.
All right, and thank you, and let's, if we can, add that on our, right, so I remember to do that. Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Thank you. All right, Mr. Hodges, floor is yours.
Well, good evening, friends. Thank you for the invitation to come tonight and present to you. I'm here not only representing Patrick and Henry Community College, but Patrick County Education Foundation, PCEF. We hosted about three weeks ago an elected official and business leaders breakfast to highlight the work that the Patrick County Education Foundation is doing on behalf of Patrick County citizens, and importantly, ways that we are trying to incentivize talent to remain local, because Patrick and Henry Community College and at PCEF, we are not the least bit interested in exporting talent. So thank you for the invitation. I'm going to be brief tonight. If you could go, we've got a PowerPoint. I think you all already have a copy, and you also have a copy of the handout that was presented as well. So if you'll advance the next slide for us? Oh, you're frozen. All right. Oh, well, all right, well, then I'll walk through it with you. We have a three-fold purpose at the Patrick County Education Foundation. There you go. Number one is to decrease the population migration from the county. We are trying to decline, decrease or eliminate the population decline. Number one, to increase the post-high school credential attainment rates, and you see the third bullet there, to increase the economic attractiveness and workforce development potential of Patrick County region in general. Most everyone is familiar with the SEED program that is funded by the Harvest Foundation for the citizens of Martinsville and Henry County. What Patrick County Education Foundation is seeking to do is to replicate that so that the citizens of Patrick County can reap the same benefits that the citizens of Martinsville and Henry County are doing. So I want to give you a little update on where we are, if you can go to the next slide. All of us are aware of the incredible work that the high school and the public schools have done here in Patrick County. You all have much to be proud of with your on-time high school graduation rates, which as of 2023 ranked Patrick County, as you well know, among the top 10 performing constituencies in the state of Virginia, something that you should celebrate and should be a point of great pride. On the opposite side of that coin is the reality that the post-high school credential attainment rates remain incredibly low for the citizens of Patrick County. If you'll note there, the national rate, 53.7% as of 2023, that's the percentage of the population age 18 to 64 who have some kind of credential beyond high school. If you'll note, the Virginia rate, 59.3%, and the Patrick County rate at 28.8%, which is of course about half of the Virginia average. Of the 133 municipalities in the Commonwealth of Virginia, Patrick County ranks 105th, which is lower than all surrounding constituencies. And I think perhaps the most troubling is that that fact that the national and the state rates are growing faster than the Patrick County rates. So we want to put that in context for you, that the aim here is to see how we, Patrick and Henry Community College and the Patrick County Education Foundation, can help solve this to make sure that we are educating the citizens here to get the good-paying jobs that keep them local. Next slide, please. As part of that, Patrick and Henry Community College has expanded our footprint considerably in this county. As you're well aware, we have the General Education Transfer Site available at our Stewart facility, been there for three decades now. There is availability of a complete transfer degree when combined with online classes. And of course, we have the Welding Lab at Patrick County High School, which provides dual enrollment welding during the day. And in the evening, all students, all adult populations, it becomes the Patrick and Henry Welding Lab, a very unique model that allowed us to get funding for that facility from the Tobacco Commission. We also have this year launched our Power Line Training Program, getting ready to graduate our third cohort, a 14-week training program with a pole farm located at Patrick County High School. And again, that third cohort of students graduating in December, marching straight into very good-paying jobs here locally. We're also pleased to have the 5,000-square-foot Balaos and Reynolds Learning Center, and we say all the time that that's a facility that's dedicated to what we call the J O B degree, getting those good credentials that allow citizens to remain here locally and get good-paying jobs for themselves and their families. In that facility, we offer mechatronics, customized training for business and industry, a workforce flex space, and an Industry 4.0 certification. And then the next slide, we are also delighted to announce, I hope you've seen the write-ups in the Enterprise, that beginning in February, we received a grant for $176,000 from the Radcliffe Foundation that will allow us to offer heavy equipment operator training for much of the construction work that's happening here locally. You understand how that's going on. It's going to be a decade in the offering, so we're delighted to be able to provide that training for the folks to stay locally for those good-paying jobs as well. So with that, where are we? Where is Patrick County Education Foundation in our fundraising, and what are the next steps? With the current enrollment that we receive at Patrick and Henry Community College from Patrick County, we estimate that year one, when we launch the Patrick County Education Promise, we call it the Patrick Promise, year one will require $45,000. Currently, as you can see from the handout that I believe you all were provided, just over 50% of the students from Patrick County already attend at a cost that's free to the family. What we're seeking to do is to incentivize students to remain locally by getting to that 100%. Do you not have the handout? Sorry, I got multiple copies for you. Don't worry. So we have a $45,000 goal for year one. We believe in year two, it would take us $90,000, and then year three thereafter, each year we would need $135,000 to fully fund the Patrick Promise on an annual basis. That means that 100% of the students who reside in Patrick County, who graduate from a locally accredited high school, Patrick County High, or a GED program or a homeschool program, would be able to attend Patrick and Henry Community College at a cost that is free to the family. Again, that's based on current enrollment numbers and the fact that just over 50% of the students already attended a cost that is free to the family. So the Patrick County Education Foundation decided that they wanted the first three years in place before they launched that program. We wanted to have the first three years of funding before we launched to the county, and we're at the $160,000 mark. So we are actively recruiting donations and soliciting feedback and opportunities that we can get the word out, because frankly, we're only $110,000 away from being able to launch what would be a tremendous opportunity and benefit for the students of Patrick County and for the citizens of Patrick County to stay local. And then finally, I'm not going to, for the sake of time, take you to all these webpages, but you've got our landing page, you've got the foundation page. There is zero overhead with the Patrick County Education Foundation. No one is paid a salary, no one is given any money for that, we don't maintain an office. Patrick and Henry Community College serves as the fiscal agent. All the work is done through that foundation work there, so there is zero overhead. Every penny that's given to Patrick Promise goes to the students and to the citizens of Patrick County. And then we won't click there, but I have two student testimonials for you. One from Sadie, and the second one is from Caleb. Both of these are students who attended Patrick and Henry Community College at a cost that is free to the family, and they can explain to you in those testimonials how being able to go free to the family incentivized them to stay local. Both now live here in Patrick County, work in Patrick County, and they accredit the fact that they were able to go free to the family as one of the reasons they were able to remain local. So what questions can I entertain for you this evening as you consider opportunities to be part of the Patrick Promise?
I certainly think, Mr. Chairman, that we should schedule some discussion on this, and we should definitely put this on the agenda for motion to make a donation, because this is one of the largest issue that I've heard from citizens and leaders, is that our children are moving out at an alarming rate, and the county's aging. So I think it's certainly something we should discuss.
And also, if I'm not mistaken, the cell tower that's going up over at, or going up over at the high school, once that rent starts, if I'm not mistaken, and please correct me, that rent from that tower is going to Patrick Promise.
If that's the case, that's news to me, but we say amen and hallelujah.
I think the school board, is that correct? Mr. Scott?
Fantastic.
Wonderful. I've had a lot of people say, hey, how come the, there's kids in Martinsville, Henry County get tuition and we don't? Let's do something. I'm like, well, congratulations, we've got a Patrick Promise and...
Fantastic.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other questions that I can answer for you?
So I'm looking here real quick. You need, what, $110,000-ish dollars roughly to reach that? And then you will need an additional $135,000 every year starting next?
That's what we intend, well, no, sir, that will be in four years. We will have three years of funding, and then, and then we'll need $135,000 each year thereafter. And Mr. Wood, it's a great question. I do want to clarify, that's with current enrollment. The only way to do what is, is to kind of prognosticate, this is where we are today, and if everyone was free to the family, this is what it would cost. So we, that's with current enrollment numbers.
Okay, and talking about your current enrollment numbers, the 135, how much, you know, could we expect it to go up to, you know, our enrollment increase? I mean, is it going to be substantially? I mean, we're talking $200,000 more a year?
It's a fantastic question. Right now, tuition at Patrick and Henry, at all Virginia community colleges, $165 per credit hour. That is a third the cost of the surrounding universities. If you look at Rafford, Virginia Tech, UVA, we're still at a third of the cost. In the last two years, the State Board, which governs our tuition, has raised tuition for the first time in 10 years. They've raised it twice, 3% and 3%. So I couldn't dare prognosticate what they might do, but there is that possibility. And there is the possibility that once folks find out that it is free to the family, that there might be an enrollment increase. We certainly saw that in Martinsville and Henry County. We went up 8% the year that the SEED program launched. That's a possibility. It'd be a great problem to have, but we'll figure that out and why we wanted to go for three years instead of having just a one-year launch.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, friends.
Thank you. All right. Next, Ms. Carol Craig, the Director of Department of Social Services.
Good evening. I'm Carol Craig with the Patrick County Department of Social Services. I understand that you all wanted an update on our agency. As you know, we've been under the corrective action plan since March 31st of 2024. I came to the agency on August 1st. The cap, the corrective action plan, we call it a cap, was set to expire at the end of August. However, the state did extend that to November 30th, and we are on track to have that finished. It included such things as the CPS timeliness to contact with victim child, case closures within established timelines, foster care visits, making monthly face-to-face visits with each child, service plans turned in to the court on time, and making sure foster children have visitation with family. Since August of 2024, CPS and foster care have consistently hit 100% for timeliness of contact for victim children and face-to-face monthly contact with foster children. October made the third month in a row of hitting 100%, and this has not been accomplished in years. The federal guidelines are 95%, making PCDSS above the federal expectation. Currently, we have 42 children in foster care. Seven are ready to be adopted, and we are working on adoptions. We have several children that are in trial home placement that will go home at next court hearings. We have a human service assistant, which is an HSA III, that is our visitation coordinator, and she is ensuring that all visits are occurring with foster children and their parents. Child Protective Services is fully staffed. We have a supervisor, two CPS investigators. In-home services has a new worker. Foster care, we have two human service assistant threes, and we are hiring for workers and a supervisor. Benefits and administration are fully staffed. We also have four emergency workers from a neighboring agency that are helping us with foster care, adoption, and in-home services. and she is ensuring that all visits are occurring with foster children and their parents. Child Protective Services is fully staffed. We have a supervisor, two CPS investigators, In-Home Services has a new worker. Foster care, we have two human service assistant threes, and we are hiring for workers and a supervisor. Benefits and administration are fully staffed. We also have four emergency workers from a neighboring agency that are helping us with foster care, adoption, and in-home services. We have two main attorneys that work our DSS cases. Linda Hartzell is our main attorney, and Renne Williams is our backup attorney. And both attorneys work well with the agency to ensure that all policies and procedures are being followed and that the workers are prepared for court. In our benefits unit, they are 100% compliant, and they are always consistently 100% compliant. Is there any questions?
I noticed we seem to have a fair amount of turnover in DSS.
Which is common.
Yeah. Are all of our people trained as they should be? Because our kids and everybody that DSS serves, you know, are most vulnerable people. I just want to make sure they have what they need to be successful in their jobs.
Yes, absolutely. The ones, the workers that we have now are trained.
Well, I see remarkable improvement over what I found to be the last seven years of dysfunction, and very thankful.
I've seen a lot of improvement as well, and I know Rome wasn't built in a day, and it takes time.
It does.
So keep us up to date, things that you need, things to come to the board, and we'll move forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Ms. Michelle Corns with Child Services Act.
Good evening. I am the CSA Coordinator for Patrick County. I've been in this position for a few months, since April, so at this point, we are requesting funding to make it throughout the remainder of the fiscal year. The county's portion would be $583,000. The state's portion would be $1.617 million, for a total of $2.2 million. And that's to absorb the expected expenditures within the budget. CPMT is the governing body responsible for providing both community-based and residential services to seriously emotionally disturbed children and adolescents who are served by the Patrick County Department of Social Services, the Patrick County Public School Board, the 21st District Juvenile and Domestic Relations Court, Piedmont Community Services Board, and numerous other agencies within the community. So it's not just, you know, DSS kids that are served. And so over the past few years, the increase has been very steady, and the charges that are filed by the vendors has increased. The ongoing drug epidemic, including increased arrests, convictions, poverty, rising costs associated with the stagnant economy are just a few of the many factors contributing to the increase in the number and severity of children in need of services. And just to give a, we got in 2020, the Children's Services Act served approximately 25 kids in Patrick County, and in the fiscal year 2024, they served approximately 65 kids. So the increase for the need of funding has jumped when you have that big of an increase in the number of kids that are being served. Are there any questions?
My understanding is some of this is legacy expense, that because of administration problems in the past, there wasn't even a director for CNPT or CSA until this year.
Correct.
How much of this is legacy expense of bills that weren't paid and now need to be paid?
Yeah, that is a very difficult part for me to exactly answer, because the county and the CSA, Lori and I have this discussion all the time. The county ends in June, CSA allows for payments July through September for the last fiscal year. So we're using the part coming from the state from last year, but we're having to use the part from the county out of this fiscal year. And so I don't have exactly the breakdown of that. I do know that almost all of those bills from fiscal year '24, to my knowledge, have been paid. So hopefully, going forward, we are within the fiscal year '25.
Is it, I know what we budgeted in the budget was 1.5.
Yes.
For this year.
Yes.
When I was on the board in 2021, we budgeted $2 million, because we were told it would take more. And I'm sure after COVID, which we can blame everything on COVID, why not?
Right.
But children had a rougher time because they were at home, everything was shut down. And then as you enumerated all the other things with drugs, et cetera, there's no way we can not fund this, because if we don't, we lose state money, do we not?
Yes, ma'am. So it's either, so there's a code of Virginia 2.2-5200 through 2.2-5214, and it is, you can participate in the shared cost allocation system with the Commonwealth of Virginia. If the county decides not to participate, then the cost to care for this mandated population becomes 100% local.
In other words, we can pay $583,000, or we can pay 2.2 million?
Yeah, pretty much. Yes.
Any other questions, any other discussion? If not, I would take a motion to schedule a public hearing on our December 9th meeting.
I move to schedule a public hearing on December 9th, 2024, for the additional fiscal year 2025 CSA appropriation.
So I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
And call for a vote, Mr. Marshall?
Aye.
Mr. Kendrick?
Aye.
Mr. Wood?
Aye.
Ms. Foal?
Aye.
And I'll vote aye as well, so that will be set for December the 9th.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next we have Mr. John Reynolds, the President of Patrick County Historical Society. I think he's got some exciting news for us.
Won't take too much of your time. I've talked with a couple supervisors, my own supervisor, Mr. Kendrick, and maybe a couple other people. I'm John Reynolds, I do work for, volunteer with the Patrick County Historical Society. We run the museum there, the front part of the building where the library and museum is located. We're a 501(c)(3) nonprofit. We've been operating for, well, more than 50 years, almost, and I've been with it since, for the last 40 or 50 myself. What we have, we have a 15-member board, and one of our board members happens to be a descendant of a Revolutionary War soldier. His name is John Wesley Martin, and he actually lives in Brown Summit, North Carolina. But all his ancestors, most all of them are from Patrick County. And he's donated several items over the years to our museum, which we're very appreciative of. But his most recent thing, he would like to donate a monument to all the Revolutionary War soldiers that served from this area. Now, it's a little tricky, because we weren't even a county when the Revolutionary War started in 1776. But we are trying, he's compiled a list as best as he can of all the people who served from this general area, and he's erring on the side of including people rather than excluding them. So he wants to donate this monument. At this time, it will stand about seven feet high and about 58 inches wide, and it will be eight-inch-thick granite. It will have between 160 and 170 names on it with space to add more if you or any of you discover Revolutionary War soldiers, anybody in the county and the area, we can add to The, one thing is, the base of it, for a monument that size, if you deal with tombstones or anything like that, you have to dig a hole and put in some concrete. So that would be like two or three feet deep below the monument, at least, for one of this size. It wasn't going to be quite that big, but he wants to put not only the names, but the birth and death dates of the soldiers, if known. And at the top of the monument, as you can see on your little diagram, it'll have Patrick County Historical Society, that was his idea, and a Minuteman, just a relief figure of a Minuteman soldier, which is, you know, like those who fought at Lexington and Concord. And the bottom of it, of course, he will get credit for it. He is actually a captain in that North Carolina Sons of the American Revolution, that's the NCAR at the bottom, and he's also in the Color Guard. But that's the basic, the location we were thinking about is between where the current flagpole is and the parking lot, just kind of in line with the flagpole going down towards the parking lot. On the other side, the right-hand side of the flagpole is the big pipe that came from the Kibler Valley Power Project and a tree. So we thought, as you walk up the sidewalk towards the library, you will look to your left, and you'll see that monument will be facing you there. It's up to the board, you know, we had, you guys own, the county owns the building and the, all the lot that it's on, the library and museum building. We just run the museum part of it, and the library does their thing. We are a small organization, we have one very part-time employee, and the rest of us are all volunteers, including Mr. Martin, who wants to donate this thing. And we just request approval for it. At some point, he would like to, he's getting on up in years, like a lot of us, he would like to get this, you know, get this done fairly soon if y'all approve it. The other thing is, it will have to be checked wherever we installed it, underwater lines, power and sewer, whatever, so that might affect where it could be placed. So we'll take care of that, or the county can take care of it, we'll coordinate with them however you want to do it, and the county administrator. If it's approved, we would really appreciate it. It'll be a monument that will last a long, a long time for the county. And being a veteran myself, these are Revolutionary War veterans, and they need to be commemorated just like all the others. The county's done a good job in the administration building here with commemorating all the veterans who died in service or killed in action, but this will be one for people who served in our first war. And it's also coming up, I saw Mr. Houghton's here, the VA 250, the 250th anniversary of the American Revolution is coming up the year after next, and that's another thing that would be a great commemoration if we had a monument to those soldiers here in conjunction with that anniversary. And any questions?
Anybody have anything?
Which way does the monument face? I'm trying to see the picture, is it face the sidewalk or the porch walkway?
It would be facing the porch walkway, I think. That's just, because people park at the far end of the lot, anybody, basically anybody who walks up the walk to the museum or library would see it that way. If we were facing the other way, and you parked at the far end, maybe you wouldn't see it, I don't know, we're subject to, we can negotiate that. We're not hard to please. Oh, the cost for the county, zero, $0. It's down the road, there might be some maintenance for it, you know, like cleaning, but you know, the Historical Society, if we're similar, we're still, yes, we could take care of that. And the county already takes care of the grounds, mowing and weeding around the flagpole and the little, we've got a little time capsule right there in front of the flagpole, so the cost to the county would be virtually nothing. Anybody?
Anybody have any other questions? All right, that is exciting, thank you very much. And at this time, I will take a, and I will take a motion to...
I knew that we approved the proposed installation of a Revolutionary War monument at the Patrick County Museum and Patrick County branch of the Blue Ridge Library.
I'll second that motion.
All right, call for a vote, Mr. Marshall?
Aye.
Mr. Kendrick?
Aye.
Mr. Wood?
Aye.
Ms. Foal?
Aye.
And I'll vote aye as well, very well, thank you, and be very excited to have that All right, next we have Mr. Mark Vernon, RFP 2025, $91,000 to Ararat River Watershed Dam and Professional Engineering Service.
For the benefit of those that don't know me, I'm Mark Vernon. I'm the administrator of the Erosion Settlement Control and Stormwater Management Department for the county. You've got in your board packet a request to approve a proposal for engineering services, and this would be a term contract proposal. I was here last month presenting on behalf of the Ararat Rip Watershed Flood Control Dams on some grant money. The county's been working on these dams for, I guess it's going on three years now. We've been trying to obtain regular operation and maintenance certificates for these dams that is required by the Department of Conservation and Recreation under the Virginia Dam Safety Act. Earlier this spring, we did submit applications for those certificates, and we obtained conditional certificates. Again, there's still items to be performed on these dams. So the items that are performed, that need to be performed are going to require professional engineering services, something that the county cannot provide. So we went out with an RFP in October the 17th, I do believe, to obtain some proposals from engineering firms for that work, and we got back three proposals. Selection Committee of myself and Ruth Russell and Donna Shuff met, reviewed the proposals, and we have selected Schneible Engineering as the most qualified, knowledgeable, and experienced. And they have been working on these dams for a couple of years already. They've performed a lot of workforce, so they know the intricacies of these dams very well. They've done hydraulic and hydrological studies on the dams, they have recommended the hazard classifications for the dams, they've done a lot of work. And they are in a position, too, to get started on the work that we need done in December. And that's pretty key, because we are looking at submitting for more grant money to help us pay for this work. And those grants open up in December and close in March. And having already gone through a grant application process for these dams, it takes quite a while to get through that process. So we need somebody working on this engineering work and also some grant applications pretty quick. And Schneible and their proposal said that they could start first of December. So that was an important part of their proposal as well. So the recommendation is that the board approve awarding Schneible this term contract for engineering services for these dams. If you're not familiar with a term contract, this will be added to, we can renew it every year, up to three years with Schneible, and that's pretty key, too. When you have professional engineers working on projects like this, you want to keep them there, because they know what they're doing, and they become very familiar with the work. So that's the recommendation, and we're asking for your approval to make that award. And I'm happy to entertain any questions that you have.
Anyone from the board have any questions?
Is this a contract to start work, or just a contract to bid on the project?
Well, Ms. Foal, this would be a contract to procure the services from Schneible that we need. And we do know upfront that we are going to need some services. One of the conditions on the certificate was a professional or a P. One of the conditions on the certificate was a professional or a PER and preliminary engineering report on some work that we have to do on the low-level drain gates at the high-hazard dams. So what we would do on those items is go to Schneible, tell them what we need, and then we would negotiate prices on that with them and then get them to start work on it. So, and we would have to come back and get approval for that too.
You'll have to come back to the board for the...
Yes, every project that would be added, we would come back with a, and you would see the price on that.
Right now, we don't have any pricing.
We don't.
We're just...
We're selecting the professional...
We're just selecting them to be our person.
That's correct. Any other questions?
If no other questions, I'll entertain a motion to award the services to Schneible.
I'll make the motion.
Got a motion, I'll say. Got a motion to award the engineering services to Schneible.
Second.
And I have a second. Call for a vote, Mr. Marshall?
Aye.
Mr. Kendrick?
Aye.
Mr. Wood?
Aye.
Ms. Foal?
Aye.
And I'll vote aye as well.
Okay, thank you. You'll be seeing me again.
Mr. Vernon?
Yes.
Is there any way you could bring me some pictures and things of these dams? Because if the people in the crowd like me...
I could certainly do that, yeah.
We really don't know what you're talking about.
Right, okay.
I read about it in the paper every time we have to work on them, but, you know...
Right.
You know, just to lay eyes on something.
I understand, yeah. I'm glad to do that, glad to do that.
All right, next we have Mr. James Houchen, Director of Economic Development and Tourism. Mr. Houchen?
We're back.
I'm sorry.
Mr. McGinnis on the roof repairs for the Green County Council.
Yes, yeah, I'm sorry. I overlooked that, thank you. I was following my computers today. Thank you for reminding me.
All right, so Mr. McGinnis.
Good evening, leaders. I think in your package you've seen that we had money budgeted to repair the roof at the community college, community center. I took those bids, and the reason why it took so long was all the bids talked about the screws. And so I went up with our maintenance director, and I went up with the company that makes the metal roof, and really the problem wasn't screws. So what we did is we called a company in that makes metal, just as a favor, and we talked about repairing the roof around the rooftop units and putting in new metal. So I subsequently went back to the lowest bidder, and I thought advantageous to the county, one of the bids, as you've seen, didn't offer any type of warranty. One offered a one-year warranty, and I expressed this pleasure that we would like to see more of a warranty and more coatings on the roof. The company that was low resubmitted their bid. You have the supporting documentation in your package, and that's the one we recommend, which does come under budget, which the county had already set aside that money, so we did save money on that as well. Do you have any questions or concerns?
Anyone from the board have any questions?
Is this completely out of the realm of our maintenance, county maintenance? I know we don't have a lot of people, but I looked over this several times, and it seems like screws are an issue, then applying some other stuff. There's some awful big numbers.
So when we looked at it, Mr. Wood, we went up and looked at the screws, and we pulled screws out, and probably less than 10% of that roof screws were bad. Someone, somewhere, sometime, those screws are not as old as the roof. So the maintenance director, myself, the company that makes the metal, went up and looked at the screws. And really, the screws aren't the problem. Yes, there is rust spots on some of the areas that we have to pull those screws out, but I think if you looked at one of your bids, they quoted pulling 12,000 screws out, that's ludicrous. There's no need to do that at all. The problem would be, could we do it in-house? You know, I'd let our maintenance director, he probably knows better than me, but the problem really lies around the rooftop units. That's where we're getting most of the leaks. If you went into the facility itself and you'd be able to look at ceiling tiles, 90, just taking a good stab, 95% of those leaks are coming around rooftops. Some of that was the, and I don't know where the roof came from, there's L-channel on the roof, there's not a large enough angle, the L-channel's not long enough, so when the water drains off the roof, it's hitting the L-channel, which is supposed to spread it. Well, the L-channels weren't long enough. So what happened is the water's just going around it and it's puddling behind the rooftops as well. If that's something you'd want to discuss, and you know, and if the board of supervisors would recommend to my supervisor on, you know, a priority and when you'd want to do that, obviously it's something I think we could tackle, but with two maintenance people for the whole county.
And a lot of trustees.
And I did, and just so you know, when I spend money, I look at everything. I was on eBay looking at the rooftop coating, and a five-gallon pail was $286, I think. So when you start adding it up, I thought the same thing you did. And I also thought it was criminal that they talked about just screws. So I did do the homework and looked at it, looked at the price, and had an idea in my head what we could do in-home and in-house to keep doing that in the county.
My only question here real quick.
Yes, sir.
Second question, I guess. So the lowest bid received was 30...
37.
37 something.
Right, and if you look, originally they had put, that bid was 28, but that was only one coat, and we went with two coats on all the areas. We went with four coats around all the rooftop, and then we went with two coats of the polymer sear around the units themselves.
Okay. My only question to your, second question, is we're spending $37,500 for the two-year warranty. Are we putting a Band-Aid on a broken arm when we should be doing something that might cost a little bit more upfront, but would have a longer...
No, sir, I agree with you. I think replacing screws, the screws weren't it. If you look at those bids, the screws weren't it. So we brought the company in that actually makes the metal roofing. So one of the biggest things was, is we thought about replacing the metal, sheets of metal.
Correct.
If we put new sheets of metal on, we could not get a warranty. A company could do that, we could seal it, but that would void the warranty because they said the settling of the roof and the metal over time would break the seals itself. So we did do that, and there's a supporting document in there from the email from the company, American Roofing. And if you look at that email, there's, they referenced, they went to the manufacturer. So that would void the warranty. So if we put new metal on, which we had considered, then we wouldn't get any warranty. So we felt, and they came up there, and I was on that roof four times, the maintenance director was on that roof with me twice, I was on there with the roofing company twice, and I was on there with the metal company and the screw company twice. And I put everything together and presented that back to our bidders, if you would, and it would be against the law to say what they needed to bid, but I told them that their bids weren't real advantageous to the county to go back, sharpen the pencils, and that's what they did. The only other thing would be advantageous, it would be that they could get that job done. They talked about the week before Thanksgiving, and that roof should be finished. But if it's something that you'd want to discuss offline, or I don't know what the protocol is here, and talk to me and, you know, and talk about doing it in-house, you know, I can sit with the maintenance director, we've talked about that. But really, our staff isn't roofing experts, that would be the negative, right? I'm just being honest with you, I'm not saying we can't do it. I'll go up on the roof and, you know, I'll pull the metal up and put it in there, but when maybe I'm six inches short, I don't want you to call me and tell me we have a waterfall in the, in the college.
I would like to make a comment.
Yes, sir.
Cues to not watching the budget very close last year, but we did put that in the budget as being done in-house.
Is that right, sir?
Yeah.
So that figure was for in-house?
Well, we put it in there as being done in-house, so I'd like to see what it would cost us to do it in-house. And then we can compare that.
So you want me to just spec out the materials and the hourly...
That's what we speculated for the one budget making I got to.
Sure, yeah, I wasn't here. I just knew that we needed to put a roof on the college, and it's leaking pretty bad.
Well, let's look at what it would cost us.
I will. Sure, is that what you want me to do?
What would that warranty cover? You said they would offer a two-year warranty?
Yes, sir.
What would that warranty cover?
Anything, any leaks, period, top to bottom, bumper to bumper, side to side.
Any other questions?
I'll make a comment. I'm concerned about pushing this over to maintenance because this is something that needs a certain level of expertise, and they are stretched.
We did, during, remember during the budget, we did get three estimates for different companies to come in and do it, and we picked the lowest bidder and added that to the budget.
And we've run into the results of doing four maintenance, and it's very expensive. It's much cheaper just to do it the proper way the first time. Go ahead and get it fixed.
And I like the idea of the warranty as well, so that way, if we do have leaks, there is something, and that keeps our maintenance from having to go back up there and fix any leaks and...
I could put in a nice list if Mr. Kendrick wants and submit it through, you know, Ms. Donna, to you or however you'd like it, and we can sit there and look at the materials, you know, and the caulking and the mastic. And also, there's a labor rate, right? Our employees get paid as well, so, you know, I'd have to put a labor rate. I think the thing we would save, obviously, would be the profit margin made by a corporation or a company that does it. But we still have labor rates, we still have gas, we still have time, we still have insurance for our employees, and I'll put a package together, and I can submit it back to you through Ms. Donna.
How much do we have in the budget, Ms. Jones, for?
38,000.
38,000, sir.
So we already have budgeted enough to cover this?
Oh, it was in there, yes, sir. It was in there. The bids, if you look at the original bids, they weren't, that's why we told them to...
I saw those 80s and 78s.
Right. We just went back, we just had to put them on the roof a few times and tell them to sharpen their pencil.
Any more discussion, any more questions? Now I'll open up for a motion.
Well, I'll move to award the contract for roof repairs at the community center, Community College, to American Roofing Company as proposed.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion is second, call for a vote, Mr. Marshall?
Aye.
Mr. Kendrick?
No.
Mr. Wood?
Aye.
Ms. Foal?
Aye.
And I'll vote aye as well. All right. Thank you. Thank you, all have a good evening.
And thank you for your work to get that price as low as possible for it.
And to make sure we're not, that we're doing what's needed to be done instead of slapping a Band-Aid.
Like I said, not a Band-Aid on that broken arm.
Thank you for that. So also, it was brought up earlier about the FCC. So currently, the satellite and, did Richard leave?
So currently, satellite services like DISH and DirecTV, they can only provide weather and news out of North Carolina because the FCC does zones rather than cut off at the state line. So he's asking us to request the FCC to open it up to allow these TV satellite companies to allow, to provide services for the TV stations out of Roanoke, so we can get Virginia stations as well. And I don't know, but anticipation with the broadband, so I'm not sure if internet-based TV like Hulu and Sling and some of those, I'm not sure what they, what their local weather and news would be, if that would also be a North Carolina station for us. But what I would like to ask is, maybe if we could put this, have this in our packet for next month, answer some of those questions. Can we have both? If, you know, so like if we say, hey FCC, will you please allow these stations to do Roanoke, is that going to cancel out North Carolina? And where Patrick County lays, part of the county, especially weather-wise, is more like North Carolina, where parts of, other parts of the county is more like Roanoke. So if we can have our cake and eat it too, so to speak. So that's, that's what I would like for us to look into and request that of the FCC. Does any board member have any questions or anything further about that? Or if you almost have those answers, willing to go ahead and move forward with making that request to the FCC?
I would say move ahead and make the request.
I would say we need to carry it over to next month and get more information. When we first put in our little RUCU, we got Virginia. We didn't get North Carolina. We got Virginia for two years, and then they switched us automatically.
Okay.
So I think we need some more information before we go to the FCC. We don't want to mess anything up we already have.
Right, right. And my understanding is currently it pertains to the satellite companies like DISH and, but I would assume, I know most of my TV comes from internet services as well, and those other services like the Sling and the Hulu, those things, I think I get what in Boston and Atlanta, and so I don't get local stuff. I have to go to Antuna for that, so...
I think we need to know if we're going to step on toes before we do this.
And that's the part, so the FCC would allow them to open it up, but yeah, we can get more information and have that on next month's budget, please.
Yeah, county administration can give us some more information, reach out and find out what the...
Particulars are.
Mm-hmm.
Very good, all right. Any other comments from the board? All right, that is for new business now, Mr. Houchens.
In your board packet, I just need you all to take a look at the MOU between the Board of Supervisors and the Economic Development Authority. We're still in the process of getting the Small Business Development Center under contract, hopefully, and when we were looking back through some of the paperwork, the old agreement that you all had or signed on January the 8th of last year, when Mr. Simmons was here, the wording in it was off. We actually just need you to re-sign it as stated, because the document before you is an agreement or MOU between the Board of Supervisors of Patrick County, Virginia, and the Patrick County Economic Development Authority. This is your authorization for us to receive up to $700,000 from the Appalachian Region Commission, approved by the Virginia Department of Housing and Community Development. So in the old statement, they had it where it was just, it wasn't coming from ARC, they had it just coming from DHCD. So all it is, is just a wording of a change, and we just need you all to approve it, sign it, so we can get this stamped and then sent back in so we can start working, getting it going forward.
Any questions or discussion from the board? If not, I'll take it, a motion.
I make a motion, be signed.
So I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion is second, call for a vote, Mr. Marshall?
Aye.
Mr. Kendrick?
Aye.
Mr. Wood?
Aye.
Ms. Foal?
Aye.
And I'll vote aye as well. Thank you, Mr. Houchen.
Thank you very much. You all have a great evening.
You too. All right, now we're ready for our administrators' report.
So the county offices will close at noon on Wednesday, November 27, and reopen on Monday, December the 2nd, before the Thanksgiving holiday. Transfer station will close at 5:00 PM on Wednesday, the 27th, and they will also reopen on Monday, December the 2nd, at 8:00 AM.
Anything else? All right. Supervisors' report, Mr. Marshall?
All right, on October 22nd, I met with our facilities director at the college building, 212 Wood Brothers Drive, regarding shrubbery that had grown into the sidewalk areas. The condition of the shrubbery at the front of the building represented an impediment to all persons, but my greatest concern was for disabled persons attempting to utilize the sidewalk. Also, entering the building via the exterior auditorium door was made hazardous due to shrubs that had grown across the door. On October 17th, while arriving for the Tourism Advisory Committee meeting, I observed a frail-looking elderly gentleman trip over foliage while trying to enter the auditorium via the exterior door. Also, while walking around the building with the director, we discovered some structural damage that I wanted to bring to the attention of the board. I sent everybody photographs on that. The lintel over the main entrance to the Motorsports Museum has rusted and disintegrated to an extent that the structural sagging and cracking has occurred to the front of the building. Apparently, this has been attempted, the repair that was attempted in the past was taking about 15 cases of caulking and filling up a bunch of cracks. So it's, it's not a job our maintenance department is equipped to do, so we need some discussion on getting a contractor in there repairing that before it really becomes a serious problem. On October, or on Tuesday, October 22nd, I attended the quarterly Patrick County Public Service Authority meeting. At that meeting, I looked... At that meeting, I looked into concerns that had been expressed by members of the public and members of the Board of Supervisors. These concerns included the idea that rules restrictive to the enjoyment of open public meetings and free expression regarding the PCPSA specifically had recently been implemented by our county administration. The concerns raised, as I understand it, were that the PCPSA meetings have been changed from monthly to quarterly and that the public speaking portion of the meetings that allegedly had been open were now changed to require a five-day supplemental statement of questions prior to the meeting. Here's what I discovered. The PCPSA was incorporated on September 9th, 1987. From its inception, the meetings have been quarterly and the requirement of the five-day prior to meeting submission question has been in place. Anyone can still come in and ask to speak even if they have not submitted their questions or statement ahead of time. And the board would vote on whether to allow that at the time, depending on the question. The reasoning behind the five-day requirement is that the subject could be put on the agenda. This also assists the board members in bringing you a comprehensive answer to your concerns. Not all questions should be answered off the cuff. Submitting written questions to any board or entity allows time for accurate, well-informed and thoughtful responses. This ideal is generally a better service to the public than providing possibly inaccurate answers to important inquiries and concerns. On Wednesday, the 23rd, I attended the CMPT. Later that evening, I attended the EDA meeting. Later that evening, same evening, I participated in the Civic Poll Survey regarding water governance. These surveys are important to participate in as a result in aggregated data that can be utilized by governments from the federal to the local level. This data can assist in effectively formulating anything from environmental policy to grant creation and implementation. On Monday, November 4th, I attended the Patrick County Recreation Meeting. There's a slight discrepancy between the meeting time and the website and the actual meeting time. The website reflects meetings as being at 7:00 and they're actually held at 6:30. This was quite an informative meeting. I have wondered, as had some others, as to the monies that we set aside for the Stewart Rotary in our budget. But after hearing some information regarding the sports fields and activities of that facility, such as the senior citizens group, I better understand the need for funding from the county. I would recommend that each supervisor attend at least one recreation meeting and ask any questions you have before considering the recreation and rotary portions of the upcoming budget. The senior group meets every second Thursday at 11:00 AM in the Hooker Building. November 14th, I attended the school board meeting. Some highlights included Woolwine Elementary receiving the highest achievement exemplar award from the Virginia Department of Education. Their achievement was for exceeding, far exceeding, benchmarks in reading, math and science, which has them ranked well within the top 4.6% of Virginia schools. So good job Woolwine Elementary staff and students. Patrick County Schools were also awarded a $300,000 grant from the State School Construction Assistance Program and these funds will be applied to much-needed improvements and upgrades of Blue Ridge Elementary.
That was a lot.
Yeah.
Mr. Kendrick?
I can't, I can't match that one, but I'll give mine. I went to VACO last weekend, to the Virginia Association of Counties Conference, and picked up some good information and bring it back to the county and we'll discuss later on some broadband issues and several other services. I wasn't too pleased with the information I saw on the blog around in Patrick County, but that ain't no news. And then I had a West Piedmont meeting with Doug, I can't remember the date on that one, a Vision Chrysler meeting and an EDA meeting. That's it.
Mr. Wood?
I have nothing to report. The only thing I had was the recreation and unfortunately I was out of town for that meeting.
Do you have anything, Ms. Fulton?
I do. On October the 23rd, I participated in a Zoom meeting with Fleet Enterprise and it was a really good meeting. It lasted about an hour. They went over our, we leased vehicles from them, so they went over the fact that used vehicle market is really good and that to get our best return, which I think their return was 7% over, we must return a vehicle that has not been damaged and is under 100,000 miles. I hope we can do that, but I don't foresee it. I also participated in the Veterans Parade on November 9th in Stewart. It was a grand parade. If you were not there, you should have come. It was really good. On November the 12th, I attended the Fire and Rescue Meeting in Metazodan.
Thank you. So I attended Drug Free PC Coalition Meeting, and here lately, so, and I know a lot of concerns with budget, how we can reduce costs, how we can lower... Cost! So the cost of substance abuse that we have in our county is just phenomenal. Within the past two months, the equipment that we've lost and has been damaged, the equipment that's had to be replaced, medical bills, I know there's been a number of times where EMS has had to come to the jail because we've had someone in there coming down from being on substances. We've had officers injured due to someone under the influence, personal property being damaged, and the list just goes on. So if Drug Free PC, that's our Substance Abuse Drug Prevention Coalition, they need all the help they can get and it's a, it's set up for a community to solve community problems. They use a strategic prevention framework model where they identify root causes and come up with action plans for the community to take action to address substance use in their communities. Now, there are three parts to prevention. You've got the initial prevention, which is aimed at our teens and our youth, so we don't have that next generation. Old person moment, I'm sorry. Not recovery, it's before recovery. Rehabilitation, right? So the rehabilitation part, so when, you know, people look at being in jail as a bad thing, really jail is a great intervention. And so during that intervention, how do we get people on that process towards recovery? How do we rehabilitate? And then once they rehabilitated and get back out in the community, how do we ensure that they stay in recovery? And here, some of the issues we've had lately, you know, we failed with the rehabilitation and the recovery piece and the revolving door continues to grow, which cost us a lot of money. So this holiday season, Drug Free PC is starting their prevention campaign and it's going to start off as their companion campaign. And it's what you're going to start seeing from our Drug Free PC Coalition, our cards that direct friends and family to how we can help you help them, so to speak. So I know friends and families are our first-line defense, you know, you know when you have a loved one that's facing substance abuse issues, so what do you do? How do you, how do you get them help? So there's going to be a big campaign and a big push to get that information out to the community, how to help your companion. If anybody has a question, if anybody's listening to this now and say, hey, I need that information right now, you can go to Piedmont Community Services website, which is PiedmontCSB.org, and scroll down the page and look under Companion and there's some information there already. So, you know, look to, for that information. We're going to try to get it in stores and get it put out as much as we can to help you help them. I also attended a West Piedmont Work Development Board and that's something that meets and look at various potentials and I think it's kind of like an offshoot of West Piedmont Planning District. And then also Outdoor Recreation. Mr. Houchens, what's the name of that committee, the regional outdoor?
I'm having one of your moments. I just know the friends who stop us with Genius Board, named it with Geno Tate, who's director, but it's, it's a program that they've got going through a grant to take a look at regional tourism for New York County and Patrick County to be involved.
And this is focusing on our parks. And I've had a couple of phone meetings with them and Wednesday?
Wednesday, we have another meeting at 10 o'clock. It's some of the focus groups that will be meeting at 10 o'clock at Calypso in downtown school. Do you want to hear as well?
Are they meeting at 9:00, 10:00 and 11:00 or is it 8:00, 9:00 and 10:00?
We got it, we got it. 9:00, 10:00 and 11:00.
9:00, 10:00 and 11:00. So if anybody has any, any good ideas or something they would like to see in your park, stop by Calypso downtown, that's next to Tony's Pizza and the Chamber of Commerce office, and take the survey and share your input to help us grow our parks. And that's all I have. If nothing further, if nothing further, we're ready to move into our closed meeting. Who's got the... Looks like we're having more of those moments, it must be spreading. I see. Do you have a previous one and change for the, what we've got here on the agenda?
Can I do it from you?
Yes, please.
To move the board convene and close meeting pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A1 to discuss and consider the following. I apologize, I'm looking for that. Anchor Commission times two, Department of Social Services at large, Planning Commission at large times two, Public Service Authority, Dan River Stormwater, Board of Appeals at large. And pursuant to the Code of Virginia, Section 2.2-3711A3, discussion of... I can leave that part out. We're not talking about property. I apologize. And pursuant to, we have nothing else to say.
That's all.
I'm talking about those appointments. I apologize, I don't have one.
Very well, so we have the motion for those issues for personal matters. Do we have a second?
Second.
We've got a second. Call for a vote, Mr. Marshall?
Aye.
Mr. Kendrick?